Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular board meeting of the North Oakland Transportation Authority. Today is Thursday, June 19th, 2025, and we're meeting at Oxford Township Hall. Thanks again for hosting. If we could, can we have a roll call for attendance of the board?
Sure. McDonald?
Here.
Flood?
Here.
Breakfield?
Here.
Sarowski?
Here.
Ferrari?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Granger is excused. Curtis?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Burnett? Mador is excused. Waple?
Here.
Swack is excused. Oh, no, she's...
That's Bill.
That's it. Oh, that's Bill.
She's altered. She's altered.
Alterna, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have a quorum. So we will move into business of the meeting. Ask everyone to stand back to the flag. Pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The board has before it an agenda in your packet. Are there any additions, deletions from that agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I'll second.
We had Mr. Flood and Mr. Breakfield... Oh, no.
No.
Ferrari. And Mr. Breakfield as motion makers. Any questions on the motion? If none, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. My pet is all in favor. Motion carries. The board has before it the minutes of the last regular meeting. Are there any edits, corrections, changes? If none, motion to approve the minutes would be in order.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes of Thursday, May 15th, 2025? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Director's report. Lynn, your moment to shine.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just wanted to hit on some high points over the last month. We've been busy as ever. May ride totals were 9,550. We've been tracking our surveys on all of our vehicles, and we've actually had over 1,000 responses to date. We had a meeting today. We're by far the highest of all the providers, of all five providers. And actually, they showcased us at the Board of Commissioners meeting, saying what great responses that we're getting. We have over 95% overall ride experience ratings. And it's really been helpful.
Do you attribute that to the tokens you give out?
Absolutely, that's helped. And so that stopped last Friday, but we're still seeing... We still got over 200 this week. So it's great. So I think it started, and that definitely helped. And I think they're using... Qualtrics is saying that's how we've really been able to build up our numbers. And so the other providers are following in our footsteps and doing the same thing and starting to see results. So that's exciting. We also received comments in detail, so it's great. We'll have like an Excel spreadsheet, so we can see the rider, what they rated, and if there's any comments. And if there's any poor or fair comments, we actually get an email immediately, so we're able to deal with those. So that's been actually great feedback, and we're using that internally to improve operations when we need it, which is great. Some of our staffing... We did hire a safety and compliance manager. His name's Scott Leclair. He started on Monday, and he seems to be... I think he'll be a really good fit for the safety position. He is not filling the PM position like we talked about. We were trying to do both. It's going to be a daily position. So we're going to just look for other coverage, maybe not that caliber for the evening work that we needed. So... But we're really excited about the safety position.
What's his brief background?
He has had a number of safety positions. He's actually used to own, like, tent trucks for FedEx and ran a whole company part of that. He's been operations managers at two different locations for over 100 employees in big fleets. And he's run the safety and compliance for... Been hired out for safety and compliance for a number of companies. So he's very OSHA compliant, OSHA 30, OSHA, you know... Should have brought his resume, but he's... He also has a great heart for service. Gave up like two years to take care of his disabled mother, coaches Little League baseball, and was involved in, you know, in the communities, and seems like a great fit. So we're excited about having him. And we're still doing interviews for administrative assistant and our driver trainers. We're kind of getting close to that. We're hoping to maybe make a decision on those positions next week. And Vandy, our accountant, got a full-time job and has left. But Rachel has an accounting degree. She's fit right in and has taken right over. We're very excited to have her. Vandy was filling in remotely. So much help to have Rachel in the office every day. So it's been a great transition. So I'm excited to have her be part of that team. She's got a lot of great accounting experience, and I'm going to get her right into budgets next, so that'll be nice to have her help. So as far as some of our capital procurement projects, a lot of things going on. We just released our office and garage expansion project yesterday, and it's posted on BidNet, on MP TA, which is the Michigan Public Transit Authority, and also on our website. So that is underway. And our vehicle camera system, we've had some issues with that, as we've kind of discussed. We have our Smart-owned vehicles and our NOTA-owned vehicles. And the last time that we met, I think I mentioned that we have a grant and that they found out that we can't use federal grant dollars for vehicles that Smart doesn't own. So there was some research going into that. So right now, I spoke with the procurement department. What they're trying to do right now is to kind of do a sole source procurement, which would expedite the system and kind of use the provider that Smart has, which is the provider we were looking at anyway. So they're trying to just get that passed, and if that was, it would be a quicker process. But it still hasn't... We still don't have a definite answer on that. Eli Cooper, the transit manager at Oakland County, is now on the Smart board. He's taken over one of the seats that have left. So he is fighting for us, which is actually a... I think it'll be great to have Eli on that Smart board to kind of fight for all the providers, which is good. Our tablets and our mounts, they were installed. Smart had a federal grant, so it was no cost to us. But it's been found out that the contractor that they hired did not do a proper job, and they actually have to do a full rewiring, take out the wiring, take out the mounts. And so that's a process. The NOTA was having more issues than us. We've had some issues. So it's... They've been, I think, redoing it at NOTAs for the last three or four weeks. They're scheduled to come out to us next week with a new company to do the rewiring. Let's see, the municipal credit contracts. It's a one-and-done contract. Those were mailed June 10th. That's going to really help us out a lot versus having multiple contracts for all the communities every year. I'm happy that Smart's moving forward with having just one single contract. Once those contracts come in from all the communities, which I've been getting them in slowly, it'll be great. It's one-and-done, so we don't have to ask all the communities each year to fill the signatures, which would be helpful. And our website, we are in process of getting... It's been... We have it, and we're going through training. Rachel, I, and Veronica have been going through training and trying to update it. And we're hopeful. We have another training meeting next week. But as we get all the data done, I'm hoping maybe in August. If we feel comfortable, we can launch the new website, which would be great. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions on the reports or for Lynn directly?
I move and file the...
No second.
There are no questions on the motion. All in favor of the motion to receive and file the report? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Reports filed. Public comments. Hearing none. We'll move on to number eight, which is the approval of financial activity. First, 8A, informational. We normally receive and file that. What's the direction of the board?
I can make a motion to receive and file the financial.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to receive and file the financial activity. Any questions on the motion? If none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion carries. The noted bills, the amount of May 31st?
Yes, yes.
The amount of 28...
Say that again, Lynn.
It's tiny, sorry.
Yeah.
Five, it's really tiny. I had a hard time. That includes payroll from the debits and the checks.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills for a total amount of 584.337. 584.49.
I'll second that.
That makes sense.
There's a motion and a second to approve the bills as presented. Can we have a roll call vote for approval?
Yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Sarowski?
Yes.
Ferrari?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Waple?
Yes. Is that possible next time to get it just on the agenda? The number?
Oh, good idea.
Thank you.
Yes.
We've talked about that and just haven't made it yet. But you brought that...
I brought it because I can't read her printing.
I know. Rachel helped me remember.
Yes.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, so we approved the bills for payment, and we'll move on to old business, which first is the status on the Internet governmental agreement. Lynn, I'm not sure the mechanism, but I did go through the agreement and thought that I sent the suggestion... One of these suggestions through. Apparently, they weren't received because I see only Oxford Village has got the...
I know, I think yours was in last month.
Oh, okay.
Possibly, because I know, I think we had two comments last month, and then we had this comment this month.
Oh.
But I haven't heard anything else from our attorney. I did email him just requesting that we have a draft for our next meeting, you know, so that we can have something to go on. But I haven't received any other... And I've been sending him the comments as well.
And that'll be August.
That'll be August.
If we cancel July, so...
Correct.
You need to stay on top of it.
Right.
Any comments or questions from the board on the IGA? Mr. Curtis?
Section 6 and Section 7. This looks like we took the old section out of the interlocal agreement and just tried to crack to think of what it is going on today. And it's so convoluted here. We do not... We are participating, but we don't fund... Local participating governments don't fund NOTA. So a lot of this was talking about, for example, 6E, and I'll go to the second statement. This subsection is no way obligates the participating governments to transfer additional monies to NOTA. We are participating governments? Well, right, we don't have any monies going to you, nor would we have any opportunity to additionally fund it. However, above their yearly obligation described in Section 7A without the approval of each participating government. Well, the only participating government is Oakland County. Somebody noted that over on the right. But if I go down to Section 7A and read it, contributions to NOTA transportation fund will be made by the participating governments. And the amount of types of each unit's contribution will be predetermined and agreed upon. Well, that... All the money that NOTA gets comes from Oakland County.
I had noted that as well.
So that Section 6 and 7 would tend to lead you to believe that there are other entities participating in funding NOTA. And I go back to Michael of this one. The original question is, why are we having NOTA board meetings? Well, we are subcontract... We subcontract NOTA out to the county. Get their money, and we provide a service. This board directs what service you guys are doing. This leads me to believe there's some participation in payment.
So it really is just the municipal credits? So like the CDBG could be potentially given to us, you know, if the communities decide they want to?
But I think Section 6 and 7, without going into the CGDB funds, because I read that too. But this should be looked at by an attorney and say, here's what we're trying to say here.
Well, that's what we're in the process of doing.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if we're going to talk about getting rid of entire sections versus amended.
Crafting of that, so sections...
Right.
There was a lot of changes by different people in our comments.
Aren't you happier reading it?
I did. I read it too. Yeah. There's like 10 different strikeouts and adding in comments. The section should be re-sculpted.
And I'm sure that's part of... That will be done once all our comments are...
And our attorney's still looking at it too, and I haven't had feedback from that end, so...
Correct. Oh, your attorney, okay.
Really?
Okay.
It might seem a little premature if you're paying them.
I'm not... He knows that we're still all in talks, but I wanted to get him up to speed just where we are today, especially since there's been so many changes, so...
The words I was trying to capture from that last statement was, we're holding NOTA board meetings because we have an asset that we don't want to lose. And then this local agreement with participating governments... Just because you're servicing them means you're participating. So that's where I was getting at. Now, back to the balance sheet, where you have the buildings at 2,126,000. You're listing a building accumulated depreciation of 244,000. Misleading, this is the only place I see anything about the funds that have been put in by Addison, Orient, Oxford, Village, Leonard, to buy that property and building. There's nowhere in that in the local agreement that captures the amount of assets you have. Retention with these other governments, they don't have that retention of that asset. You service independents, but if you break NOTA up, or NOTA no longer provides a service to Oakland, does independents have a little bit of ownership in the building?
No.
That should be specified.
It may be that participating is not the...
Yeah. That's my comments.
Previously, it wasn't an issue, but you're right. I mean, it could be... It could open the door to that conversation, so...
That's good.
Point well taken. Ms. Ross, you did have your hand raised?
Oh, I just, again, I echo that same thing for participating and contracting, so thank you.
Anybody else?
I got an email from the state this week stating that the block grants are going away. What happens to this when the block grants go away?
There's just Orient Township that has currently done it, and I'm not sure if they're going to continue to give us the block grants because now we no longer have a requirement to... For the municipalities to contribute anything to NOTA in the past. They would use part of their block grant monies to make up that amount that they owed us. But now that there is no requirement, they may find some other place to put it if they even have them at all. So it shouldn't... We don't have anything in our budget for block grant money.
Okay, anybody else? If not, moving on then. And Lynn and I will communicate with NOTA attorney to make sure that he understands the conversation as well as the notes that he's received as far as ownership and participation. Okay. Here's a fun one. 9B, building renovation, request for proposal status update. Lynn?
Well, good news is we did finally get it issued yesterday on the BidNet and MP TA and the NOTA website. So happy to have that actually out there and in process. So this is to get a construction manager so that we can start a project. So it's actually on its way. So very happy that we have it out there, so...
Do we have a kind of an overview, quick timeline? Like when the hiring process and then the start building process or bidding process and et cetera?
I have it set for... The advertisement was yesterday. Bids are due July 15th. We have a walkthrough next Tuesday? No, July 1st. July 1st is our walkthrough with all the vendors. And then interview are going to be the week of July 22nd to pick the construction manager.
Who's opening the bids?
Haven't thought about that.
Should it be members of the board? Or just questions? Well, I think that's up to us.
Yeah, that's...
Quite honestly. Yeah. So our director is doing the managerial work on that. What's the pleasure of the board? Do we have a couple of volunteers that would be willing to sit in to go through the bids at some point? That would be arranged in the future. It would probably be that date.
I'll help out.
What was the date again?
The bids are due July 15th, and then interviews begin the week of July 22nd.
I think it would be good for have NOTA board slash community representatives there to at least account for the bids as they're received. And then with the on... With the participation of the construction manager, they'll be reviewing them to make sure that the bids are adequate or that they're going to work for us. So we have Mr. Moore?
I'll volunteer if I'm walking. It looks like I'll be able to make it because it'll be almost...
I don't think I can carry you, so I'll...
Might be with a walker.
I'll try.
Okay, so tentatively, we're going to make man.
I'm going into the hospital tomorrow.
Where's the opening going to be?
So it's going to be fine.
At NOTA?
Sure.
It'll be at NOTA, okay.
Or we can... I mean, if you'd rather it here, it's up to you.
No, NOTA's fine.
It's fine.
Won't take up much time.
What time?
Will you send them the details? Will you... So tentatively, Mr. Breakfield and Mr. Moore have volunteered. If there's a change in your availability, please let me and...
I'll let you know.
Well, let me and Lynn know, and that would... No stone unturned.
I'm trying my very best, you know that.
Okay.
What time was it, Mike?
I didn't write it down in my notes.
Send us an email.
Okay. I will. I think it's 10:00 a.m., but I have to check.
I don't know that we need to take formal action on that present and the participation of the board since we own the process.
The only thing I'd like to know is if AKA could print any smaller for us?
Yes, they can.
Lord almighty. And then make it not a mirror image.
Yeah.
Mirror image and small.
It's really hard, yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's...
That's not fair.
I could send a separate file that you could open up on your computer screen.
Yeah.
If you'd like separately.
Probably a mirror image on the computer screen.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the building renovation? Now, we'll move on to the vehicle camera and request for proposal update, which we kind of got one in the director's report. And Lynn has been keeping me in the loop. A layman's point of view, it looks like Smart's driving the RFP process, but we're not going to be able to take full advantage of it because we don't have all federally funded vehicles. So we have some liability for the cost of at least the difference. Possibly, we'll have to buy the camera and install them. So I think our first goal would be to try and get it the same pricing and installation as Smart's got if we're going to use the same vendor.
Right.
And if there's a difference, we need to know what that is, why that is, what that is, and whether or not we're going to go forward with that option.
Exactly.
Is that right?
Yes, and now that Eli's on the board, he's really going to fight against the fact that we can't use federal dollars into local vehicles because he thinks that we should be able to do that. So he's fighting on our behalf. He's like, I don't like that answer, I'm going to fight for it. So it's good that he's in that arena that might be able to help us reduce our local cost, if that's the case, but...
Somehow, you should be able to figure in the cost of not having those cameras in the vehicle.
Well, yeah.
We definitely...
Yeah, we've been bitten by that already.
Yes.
So the cameras aren't there.
That's a good point. The cost could be a lot more than the having of cameras.
You know, we talked about the cost of not doing something because we don't know the cost. We know what the cost is for not doing it.
Well, and one of the benefits, if there is any to Eli being involved, is that the county is still going to pay for this. We're trying to save them money. If they want to pay for all of it, then we're pleased to take the money and get it done. But as we all know, the Smart process is not a fast process, and the end results aren't always as advertised. So we should all keep our fingers crossed.
Yes.
Enough said. And I've said that in front of Smart representatives because it just... Their bureaucracy is just a machine that... It grinds one way, and there's no way to reverse the inertia when they get rolling, so...
The slow burn.
Yeah, until they run out of money.
You're talking to Eli. Good idea to use Jack's comment. How much is it going to cost us not to have the cameras? They might...
Well, it doesn't... Yeah, see, what I was getting at, it costs us money right now through MMR8, the insurance claim.
Yeah.
However, if we just put them in on the county's dime, we could probably save that money.
I know.
So...
Yeah, and I did build in $100,000 additional budget. So we got like $194,000 to do the purchase. It was part of the budget adjustments, which is coming up.
But I think we're all in agreement, that's a necessity and not a luxury.
Mm-hmm.
So moving on then to new business, if there's no one else. Give us the backstory on the purchase of the replacement vehicle for the totaled vehicle.
Yes, so we had a... It was actually a totaled minivan. It was not our fault. It just, the driver got kind of T-boned, no one was in the car. Luckily, nobody was injured, but the minivan was totaled. We received... I can't find my notes here. We got like $46,000 from insurance, and... We got like forty-six thousand dollars from insurance and.
It's just when there was some air bills.
Yes, thank you, where did it go?
Let's look at them.
I have a budget adjustment to add fifty-five thousand dollars, thank you. To, to actually replace it with a transit because we're finding we're having a lot of problems with the minivans. So there, we've had lately, we had three of them. Now, when you open the side door, it, it broke the window in the back because there's some issue with the thing. We've had multiple issues with tie downs and getting the wheelchair secuements in there. There's been a lot of breakdowns, we've headed into mobility works multiple times, they're the provider. So we're, the transit has just been more trustworthy, so we're, we're moving to a transit instead of the, of the minivan. So that's why it's a little bit of an upcharge and it costs a hundred thousand five ninety-two for a new transit now, which was eighty thousand like a year ago or so, so.
Is our insurance company going to be on board for that? For a different type of style of vehicle?
Yeah, they're fine with whatever vehicle we have.
Okay.
No problem.
Just so we don't get that coming back at us. Okay.
And this is from the state contract, so this is through Hoekstra who's on the state contract, so it's state pricing. So we don't have to go up for bids.
So do we need a vote on this to approve it?
Yes.
At, at the budget numbers that are shown?
To purchase the cost.
Fifty-four.
Yeah, to, to purchase the vehicle for a hundred thousand five ninety-two thirty would be great.
I'll go ahead and make that motion. We have no choice but to purchase the new vehicle for one hundred thousand five hundred ninety-two thirty.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call in for that, please?
Sure. McDonald.
Yes.
Flood.
Yes.
Breakfield.
Yes.
Zarewski.
Yes.
Ferrari.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Wappel.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, we're going to be buying a replacement vehicle. Moving on to ten B, twenty twenty-five budget amendments.
Yeah.
Lynn, I'm going to hand it over to you again.
So the budget amendments are kind of part of the, right after the balance sheet, we have the budget actual. And just have a few adjustments with revenue. Actually, our revenue increased because we received this new fifty-three eleven grant, which we've been actually fighting for, for years to try to get. This is a continual grant, so we'll get that. It's, it's a match for our rural dollars, it's eighteen percent of our rural dollars. But then we have to back out the LBO that, on the local bus operating from that. So there's, you'll see in a, you'll see that we're adding a budget of four hundred ninety-seven thousand two ninety-two to our fifty-three eleven. That's with the budget formula that they, it came out to. And then I backed out some of the LBO funding of three thirty-four because it, just the way the formula works, you have to back it out, so. But it's a net gain, so that's really positive. I also added just some adjustments to the TTI, fair income and, that we do billing for separately, and our veterans grant of forty-two hundred, so that's an additional revenue. And we also had additional interest revenue from, from our ADM, primarily ADM that we have, giving investments through in my class. So those are additions, which is a total of increased revenue of two hundred twelve thousand one seventy-five. And then on the budget, on the expense side, excuse me, we have the fifty-five thousand dollar vehicle replacement cost addition. We have the a hundred thousand dollars for the vehicle camera, that's a hundred fifty-five thousand. And then the difference is just put into contingency of fifty-seven thousand one seventy-five. So right now we have a contingency of almost two hundred eighty thousand, just FYI.
That's what Cam was saying.
Well, we have, we do have a budget of a hundred ninety-four thousand, but we could potentially, yes. But we still have to go through an RFP process, so that's what.
And hence the wheels or the gears grind.
I'll make the motion, approve the twenty twenty-five budget amendments as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the twenty twenty-five budget adjustments as, as presented. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. McDonald.
Yes.
Flood.
Yes.
Breakfield.
Yes.
Zarewski.
Yes.
Ferrari.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Wappel.
Okay, motion carried. Special event service discussion. I asked Lynn, Lynn brought me in on the situation with the change in law, et cetera. And as, as you saw or read, may have read, I gave her direction to not schedule, make the scheduled charter that had already been basically reserved, I guess would be the best way to put it, they put down the down payment. Noda's going to, probably has already refunded that.
It's in our bills right here, yes.
So is there any questions on? Lynn did a nice job on the board discussion packet for that. But the bottom line seems to be that we can't do charters unless we use our own Noda vehicles, which aren't up to the stack, generally not what people want to charter. They want bigger buses, the large style vehicles. Lynn, you want to fill in the gaps that I've left?
Sure. It was, it was when we got this new fifty-three eleven, when I was signing the exhibit where it says no charter for FTA. And I'm like, whoa, we use all cutaways, which is the big ones for these events. So then we did M dot meetings, we talked to everyone and there's ways we can do it, but then you have to back everything out and be specific on reporting and it just seems like it's pretty laborious. And then their attorney for the pub crawl was asking us to, to basically make sure that we're, if anything were to happen on this issue, would we be covered for any issues? And our insurance person said yes, but you know, we have a seventy-five thousand dollars per loss that would be our responsibility and we're really not making any money on these events, so. And we've had, yes, it's just, so it became to be like.
The, the regulations themselves pretty much make it impossible for us to take money for a charter, even if it's just for fuel and manpower. And we typically, we don't charge our communities, our, our member communities have a fee for putting money beyond what the expenses are. So we, basically, we'd have to sacrifice the federal transit aid money in order to continue to do charters, so it makes no sense. Joe?
Yeah, I talked to Lynn a little bit about it. I think we may want to consider buying a bus, a twenty-seater or something, having that on the side for these type of events. Until if you want to do the pub crawl, you'll charge X for a driver, X for gas, Y for this. Thirty-five dollars a person, whatever that figure is. Because I think the service is needed, but have it over on the side for all these different events. Parks Rec might use it, Addison might use it. It's, it's better than, and our Parks Rec will use like a, one of those big buses, Jack, go to the Tiger Stadium. If there's ten of us, rent this from Noda. Why have all those big charters that you're probably paying a ton of money for?
Yes, Jack.
Yeah, I thought about this in a couple of ways. How do you do the driver? I mean, it's just like a Noda driver going to ride the, drive the shuttle, the trolley. Okay, you're not using a federally funded bus, you're not using the employees reimbursed through the DDAs. Like Joe says, you'd have to buy a bus and provide that service for the community. Noda was scattered in these communities and everybody has a feeling, I could just call Noda and say, hey, can I use a bus this weekend? That's no longer available. If you wanted to get into the limousine business or chartering business, you'd probably still do so because we are our own entity. You're not being funded by Oakland County for that, so.
Right, Oakland County, I'm, I'm.
There is no Levada limousine out this way like in the city. In Warren, you can call Levada and say, he picked twelve of us up and drive us to the bowling alley and bring us home. Here, we can't say, you know, there's twelve in Oxford that want to go down to Oakland County for something. Well, come pick us up, we'll pay for it, we can't do that.
We do have some providers that we gave them numbers, there's actually some, you know, that we gave them alternatives.
Which was generous to do.
Oh, sure.
On our part, and maybe hopefully that'll keep some of the goodwill that was generated in the past. Some of you that were on the board can remember when we started talking about the trolley. It, it, it's a difficult, difficult topic for us to spend Noda money to purchase a vehicle for special purposes that may or may not be aligned with that community's direction, so.
We do have a contract with Independence though to, to provide those services for the next ten years that we signed. Some of them are, we do actually hire and pay for a separate provider to do those. And then we have like, I think eighteen that are under contract that we use, usually we're using our cutaways for. So those are just, you know, in, in some of those instances, we might be able to just put them under general service if they're during the day in our normal operating hours and they're for seniors and we're going to set places. I feel like we could probably work them in in our normal operations. It's one, it's out of our hours and people want to do, you know, after hours until like midnight or something that we're, you know, those are, that would definitely be a separate charter type service, but there's maybe potentially some of those events, we could do it and, and just call it our normal service.
If you have that bus on the side, we won't have to worry about it. Put Independence there and everybody else there.
The.
And I think you're just getting, when you're doing like a pub crawl, you're getting away from the whole mission of, you know, Noda. I mean, I think if you stick within that mission of Noda, exactly what you just said about some senior or something at those kinds of activities, then, then that's kind of what it's about.
Well put, because that was obviously one of the things that is a concern to all of us is we have to have priorities. We don't want to compete with private business for obvious reasons, so. And this wasn't our, and we're not, we're actually forced to this by the funding standards, so. It's regrettable and I wasn't aware, does, does Independence reimburse us on those charters?
It was built into what their contract was and Oakland County said, just okay that and we'll just pay for it. So Oakland County agreed to pay for their trips to do it because it's part of this agreement that we made, so.
Maybe we should have that conversation in the other, in the other communities as well.
That's potentially something.
Well, when you take a finely crafted experience for the communities and you say, no, we can't do that anymore because of the federal requirements and the county bank requirements, it's a hard pill to swallow, but you don't do it anymore.
Right. Any other thoughts on that? Because if we don't take action, we're out of the business, basically. That's the way it is, the charter business.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike, would it be a good idea to just put a little blurb on our website that we no longer can do that? And it saves Lynn with.
That sounds.
Sure.
An issue.
Sounds like it could, maybe with the explanation of under federal funding standards, et cetera, et cetera. So that it does sound like we made an arbitrary decision to not do it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Try to not get a black eye.
Right.
Okay, if there's nothing else then sadly, we're considering canceling the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Noda meeting.
I think we'll be okay.
Tanya and Mike? Okay.
Jack second.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the special events or we're just, we're just saying?
Yeah.
Probably don't.
Well, what you've done.
No, I didn't know if we needed them.
You probably have a motion to vote on this motion, make it formal.
Well, let's, let's finish then with the canceling the meeting motion and then we'll move back to the special event discussion.
Okay.
On favor of the motion to cancel the July seventeenth meeting of Noda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. No, no's, okay. It's canceled, okay. With the board's indulgence, we'll back up. Spence suggested that we should probably formally resolve to end the charter service portion of our service to the public and to our member communities and residents. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Just discussion on Independence, so do we?
Oh, I.
Since it's part of our contract, so just for those events, okay.
They're using, they're using non-fed buses, right? They're, were these theirs? Shouldn't I ask that question? Maybe some question shouldn't be asked.
Are they using Noda buses or Noda buses?
Well, they're using their previous, their own buses, but they're now.
Their own buses that we don't use in Noda?
No, they've been repurposed, they've been re, they're now under Noda, they no longer are under Independence.
But we don't have money, we don't have federal money in them.
No, they're, they're federally owned vehicles because they're cutaways that they got from SMART, just like us.
Oh, okay.
So.
Should we go back and revisit that relationship then, in light of that, with our attorneys?
Potentially. And I, I can check and see what events are following our, our normal business that we can just use as our normal business, if it's for seniors and whatever general operating hours. It would be maybe the extra events that we've committed to that we could maybe charter of just another company and be covered that way potentially.
That's a good point, because as you may have read in the note, the notes that Lynn sent us, you know, if we're, if they're serving our target communities, the veterans, the disabled, et cetera, there's, there's really no problem. But if it's not, it's general public, like a pub crawl or whatever it might be, where the general public would be getting on and off, there is a problem. So let's, let's go ahead and proceed with the motion. And if we want, if, if the, the motion maker and supporter are in favor of it, we'll say accept as otherwise contractually required.
I'll agree with that.
Jack? It ain't perfect, but.
No, I just don't like Independence being able to provide a service that Noda can't provide.
Well, the county's going to pay for it though, because we're going to say, no, we can't use your buses because this is not, you're not serving our main, our main customers, the seniors, the disabled, et cetera, and the public, actually. Technically, I guess the county would say, we have to serve the public. If that's the case, no, we can't do it. And we'll charter, they'll charter another bus for that activity. I mean.
I think the majority of them are for seniors, because it's through their senior center. I think majority of them are senior related, I just don't know what the times are.
Yes.
Shouldn't we have some sort of amendment to the contract now that we know when things have changed? I mean, ten years is a long time.
Well, Independence, there's, there's a backstory, but you're right, you're absolutely right. We should probably have it reviewed by a legal counsel whether or not we'd be putting ourselves in any jeopardy by doing it. Although we wouldn't be if we're not doing it and they're basically paying for it.
I mean, we're under contract, but if the federal regulations have changed since we signed the contract, I mean, I think that would be a reason for us to go back and look at things or how we're structured.
Well, yeah, but the fine point is, is if they're servicing our seniors, et cetera.
Right, and I get that.
And they can use a federally funded bus, but if they're serving somebody else and we have a contract, we're not going to violate that. We'll hire an outside third party and the county's, that was, the county approved that.
Right, so we just.
So we're not, we're not doing it ourselves, we're outsourcing it to a third party.
Let's play what if.
Boy, I hate it when you do that, Jack.
But what if I just call up Noda and say, hey, I got a pub crawl Friday night. I want a, I want a Noda bus from seven to midnight. You're going to say?
No. Can't do it.
How come Independence can do it? They work under Noda. Why don't you send the Independence bus out here, have them drive me to my pub crawl and charge me for it? You know.
It's a contract, we have a contractual agreement that's defined, I mean, geographically for Independence Township. And that doesn't include, I hope, the city of the village of Clarkston. Because that's another whole ugly, whole no ugly thing, I know, I know.
I'm going to call you up next week and say, I want the, I want the Independence bus to come out here, because I know you can't. Tell them no.
Jack, we have an amended motion.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't have the answer to it because it's, there's no definitive answer. You're saying, no, you can't do it, but you do it.
Well, we're not going to violate the law by using a federally funded vehicle. We're giving it to a third, third party, so. Done and dusted.
Then I can get my Independence bus up here, pick me up through Noda.
No.
Yeah, it's a vehicle, you're good.
Yeah.
Oakland County's agreed to pay for that, we're not paying for it, we're not doing it.
You're good. I don't understand what Oakland County is paying for.
Well, they, they agreed to pay for the third party.
For us to hire.
The excursions for third parties.
So excited or.
That's why I say we should have, maybe we, maybe they're smarter than us, we should have negotiated something like that through the county for all, for our people too, but frankly, I don't think, I don't think, we never intended to get outside of our prime service group and we've been forced into it in a sense. But I, as long as we don't violate the intent and the terms of the funding requirements, this one needs looking into.
Yeah. Because we're voting that Noda can't do it.
Yeah.
But yet you have three buses in Independence that are contracted under Noda and you're letting them do it.
But we wouldn't be doing, I, I, what I'm thinking is that we wouldn't be doing it outside of our service area and only for, so if it's a senior trip to go in our service area in times, we would keep those buses and that would not violate it. If it's outside of it, then we would use the other providers. If it's outside of it, then we would use the other providers that we use for the other, for the bigger trips.
Which is what you've done anyways.
Yeah, for those, yeah, the other ones, we hire a bigger bus for them and that's what they've, what they've done in, in the past and they wanted us to do the same thing. It was part of us making the agreement between them.
Trying to be nice in the beginning, you get it in the end.
Well, I, none of us, I don't think, has ever been through this. You know, the transitioning from a private, semi-private, community-owned system to a mass transit system. But, uh, we're still not doing fixed routes and we're still serving our primary customers. Mike?
In the original motion, we were going to vote with, you know, to deny providing the service. Did we give a reason why we're not providing it? Should we add the federal guideline, unit of federal guideline?
I believe I added that in that motion that it's...
Yeah, so I wanted, had the motion...
Because of mandate, we had...
Okay.
Got our eyes crossed with you.
I didn't draft...
It's been so long ago, hasn't it? I'll look at the August minutes and see what it said.
Let's, Rachel's up and taking notes, see if she...
Rachel says what? Taking notes?
Piece something together for us.
Over the place.
Yeah, it's over the place.
Well, I believe the motion was to permanent...
I did too, sometime in the future.
Was to formally end all charter service.
If we don't make a motion, we don't, I mean...
I think that you just keep telling people that the federal requirements don't allow you to do special charter services through Noda.
Yeah, that was my motion.
It was.
But you did it well.
That was the motion originally.
But then, we had a revision to that motion, which...
Because Independence is doing it.
Well, technically, they're not violating it because we're, we're getting a third party the job and they're getting paid, well, through Noda, but, um, by the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
But...
We're, we're, we're at an impasse here because you're saying exactly what I'm saying is wrong. I have three bu, three buses in Independence that I can contract to go to pub crawl. Yes, no?
No, no. No, I would, I would, um, the only events that I would do for them would be ones that would be our seniors in, that would be our total...
Only for seniors.
Government.
Like our, our government, our, our, it would be a normal service.
The local community sanctions the...
Right.
We do right now.
So if it...
They did this, Orion did this one.
Right.
So...
So if it was a pub crawl, I would say, no, we'd have to, we'd have to hire like the Excite Transportation or another charter company that does those type of service. And then, um, that would be, I wouldn't use the, the FTA vehicles for those types of services.
What do we want to accomplish with this motion?
I don't, well, frankly, that's one of the reasons I didn't want a motion. I didn't think one was necessary. The law is the law. The executive director is aware of it, the organization is aware of it.
Aware of it.
Don't break the law.
Yep.
That's the bottom line. Now, if somebody in Independence wants a pub crawl for the public, Independence Township would have to sanction it before we'd even look at it, right? I mean, that's the system, that we don't take calls from outside, uh, organizations and say, like we have, we have done that in the past because we didn't, didn't have the FTA funding guideline.
You're right. I think maybe I should just rescind my motion because, why? It's, we're living by the mandate that we're being forced to live with. It's like make a motion that we don't speed. Okay, I'll second it. I mean, they're telling us we cannot use the buses for recreation.
If you, if there's a formal motion out there, and we'll have to vote on the one that's already been seconded, but, and not the amendment hasn't been seconded. But, um, maybe we should just pass a motion acknowledging that the, our FTA guidelines on financing transportation and the use of buses for charter are understood by the organization.
Yeah.
And we don't have to get into a lot of words about...
They're getting a we...
What if this, what if that, Jack? No, but they're valid, I'm just teasing, but I'm here.
So Rachel, do you get my motion through Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're back, we're back to the original motion. If you don't, if you want to consider the, an alternate motion, then you would vote no on this. If you're fine with the motion as presented, uh, you would vote yes. So could we, could you read it, Rachel, the motion?
Yes, sir.
From, from, uh, head.
So your original motion?
Yes.
Okay, so the original motion, um, was to formally end all charter, charter services to the public due to our federal guy, or due to federal guidelines. That is.
What's the pleasure of the board? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay. Motion carried, that's it, unless there's another motion.
What if?
Oh, no, we could water the phone.
What if? How do you get on charters?
We have, um, a kind of a listing of it. Um, we did like the Pineup, Light Show, Corbett Cur Show, Taco Fest, Pub Crawl, St. Patrick's State Pub Crawl, like Meadowbrook Theater, Wayne State Planetaryum, Independence and like Landfill. Like the landfill was just like during the day with community, like, um, so that would be something we could still continue.
They were all public, though? They were not strictly senior?
No, those are public.
Would that be an average month?
Those, those are just in total, so there isn't that many. And we've done a couple weddings, um, weddings were a problem because they really didn't pay. Um, so now we require fifty percent, we used to require fifty percent deposit upfront, um, so.
Not enough for us to consider going into the charter business.
Right, and we really didn't make much money anyways, whether it was really kind of a community service, so.
Okay, so, we're done. We finished ten D, um, public comments, hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board on, uh, the monthly rider and mil, mileage report?
Will you receive and file?
I'll second.
Motion in second to receive and file, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Board member comments? Jack, why don't you lead us off?
What? Yeah.
Now, um, I have no comments, thank you.
Is there Ross?
No comments.
Lynn, you don't get one, I do. I'll pass. Mr. Moore?
I'm just happy to have a extra day off next month, July seventeenth.
Mr. Breakfield?
I'm good with it.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Carl?
Happy fourth.
All right.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Okay, Mr., uh, who's supported? Mike?
Mike.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you, everybody, we'll see you in August.